It's 9:30 now, our session's called at nine. We are waiting for quorum, it looks to me. If clerks could just take the roll.
Senator Barnett, Senator Blas, Senator Brown, Senator Duñez, Senator Fisher, Senator Luhon, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, Senator Parkinson, Senator Perez, Senator Canata, Senator Siniklis, Senator Sin Augustine, Senator Shelton, Senator Tid agree, Speaker Terlachy. Madam Speaker, there is no quorum.
There is not a quorum? We're one short of a quorum. We'll take a recess until we have quorum. Imane Trontayshetin Alehasa Turnguahan is back from recess.
The importance of this amendment is to showcase that we really need to implement many different approaches to limiting access and limiting also the attractiveness of these carcinogenic and highly addictive substances which have long-lasting impacts and for those, especially our youth, that are vulnerable to messaging and to advertisements which normalize the use, which is one of the roots of the problem. And so I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the First Amendment, page four, lines eight to 10. Is there anyone who would like to speak on that amendment? If not, the sponsor may close on the amendment. She waves closing. Is there any objection to this amendment?
No objection.
Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Second Amendment is on page six, line 17. And so this particular language, it states limits, so it strikes out what's there, and the language that replaces it states limits any outdoor and all point-of-sale tobacco advertising, except in adult-only facilities, to black text on white background only. And so this type of language was actually specific to federal law and regulations. So we wanted to align it to that more closely.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this amendment? Senator Fisher, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm addressing this amendment the way it is, with this amendment, the way this new statute reads. It shall be a violation of 11 GCA Chapter 6 for licensee pertaining to advertisement, promotion, and sponsorship of tobacco products and e-cigarettes to limit any outdoor and all point-of-sale tobacco advertising. In other words, this statute, as it's amended and as it now reads, a licensee cannot limit any outdoor and all point-of-sale tobacco advertising. I think that is 180 degrees out from what the author intended. And I wonder if I may ask the question of the author of the amendment, does she agree with my assessment?
With the sponsor, you.
Can I ask for a quick recess?
Sure, for a minute recess. We're back from recess. Another amendment has been passed. Senator Perez, we left off, you had yielded to a question from Senator Fisher.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to withdraw the amendment and proffer a new amendment.
Is there any objection to withdrawing, allowing the senator to withdraw her amendment? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to proffer this amendment. It's page six, line 17. To amend 6408E, to read, have any outdoor or point-of-sale advertisements, except in adult-only facilities, and such advertisements shall be limited to black text on white background only. And again, it's to align with the federal regulations.
All right, thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to be recognized? On the amendment, Senator Sinagustian, on the amendment, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The only problem I have is that you have an original bill, then you come up with a substitute, and then the author comes up with amendments to her own bill, and even her co-sponsor has an amendment. I'd ask that the bill be referred back to committee, clean it up, put it together, send it out one time, so we can just read one bill. Because I'm going back to the original and falling on with the substitute, and then I'm trying to keep on track now with the amendments. It's from the author. I highly recommend, and I ask my colleagues, to support me that we refer it back to committee so they can be cleaned up one time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the bill back to committee. Is there an objection? There's an objection.
Ma'am, I have a point of inquiry. Are we allowed to amend the bills when they hit the floor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion to refer the bill back to committee. There's been an objection. All in favor of referring the bill back to committee, please raise your hand. Motion passes. All right, the next bill is number 233-37LS. Senator Kanata, you are recognized.
Hafley, good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I move to place bill number 233-37 Core, sponsored by Senator Roy A. B. Kanata and co-sponsored by Senator Joe S. Sinagustian, which is an act to amend subsection 17116 and appeal to, repeal to subsection 17118, Chapter 17, Title III, Guam Code, annotated relative to changing preliminary reports to quarterly reports and eliminating final and supplementary reports into the third reading file. And I'd like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 233-37 enhances accountability of campaign funds of candidates by requiring candidates to submit quarterly reports rather than current standard preliminary and final reports. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I kindly ask for my colleagues' support on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who would like to speak on the bill? Any senator? On the bill, Senator Brown, are you raising your hand? All right, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I don't have a problem with the bill or reducing reports to the Election Commission because I find it's kind of strange. Before the election, you do a report. Right after the election, you do another report. No problem. I'm all for accountability. I'm just a little uncomfortable. It is March of an election year, and as I drive down the road, I see, you know, campaign signs all over the place. God forbid, every other year on Guam, we're going to look at campaign signs all year long until November. I have a problem with that. We're getting too close to the election. We've already picked up our packets. We knew when we ran or when we were getting our documents, when we're filing what the current requirements are. And I just am uncomfortable that we're a few months away from an election. And while it's just, you know, people will say, oh, it's just filing reports, we're reducing the number, what's the big deal? I just don't like messing around with things related to the election, the year of the election. So that's my reservation. I probably am not going to vote for this bill just simply because of that. You know, if there's another round next year, and we're here, and we're doing it the year before, then I'd be open to deliberating and debating all these issues with regards to elections. But because we ourselves, a number of us, are going to be participating in the election, I don't know unless there's anyone here who's not, we just shouldn't be messing around with it. Traditionally, that was the way it used to be. You don't touch election-related issues during the election year because now we're engaged in the process and we're mending the process. And others can look at, are you guys doing it to benefit yourselves? So I have that reservation. Not the content of the bill. If it was another day and time, I'd be more than happy to raise my hand and say, amen. Let's reduce the, you know, numbers of almost replicated reports unless anything changed in a couple weeks from the time you filed the last report. But it's just the timing. The timing, I think, at this stage already, you know, we're almost, March is almost over. We're heading into April. In several months, we already have a primary election. So that's my main reservation, Madam Speaker, that I'm relaying with regards to this particular bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill, Vice Speaker Munir Barnes, you are recognized.
Mrs. Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I listen to the retiring speaker, I want to say, I understand that her perspective is of concern as it relates to an election year. But when these bills were given to the Oversight Chair, if I'm not mistaken, it was given with a bunch of other recommendations from the Guam Election Commission Board of Directors, and I guess with working closely with the Executive Director. And it just talks about reorganizing the reports from having to do it pre-primary, having to report right after primary, having to report right before general, right after general, and then so the recommendation was to work on it on a quarterly report. So for me, even if it's an election year, I understand. But in this, in this process, this election, I mean, this legislation was literally at the recommendation of asking this August body to look at making the whole report as it relates to reporting quarters on a quarterly basis. So literally, we'll still have four reports, but to make it organized and consistent, that it would be on a quarterly basis. So on that effort, as I respect the retiring speaker, on her perspective, I want to say that with my perspective, looking at it from before the primary, right after the primary, before the general, right after the general, and so forth, I think that making it on a quarterly perspective, that would be every three months. So I support the efforts, and I thank the Guam Election Commission, and of course, the Board of Directors and the Executive Director for working closely with the Oversight Chair, Senator Masi.
Senator Masi, Vice Speaker. On the bill, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, when you want to refer to, in this body, when you want to refer to comments made by a certain colleague, a lot of times you refer to them as to where they're staying. Problem is, the last two speakers, they both stay in the same area, within a rock's throw from each other, the same street and everything. So I want to talk about, you know, I want to be able to relate to the comments that were put by the General Lady from the lower part of the same area. Okay? Senator Brown, I, you know, Madam Speaker, I have to agree with the good senator in that I understand the value of the bill. It's a good bill. And to take nothing away from the author of the bill, and I recognize what he's doing is he's basically, you know, based on the recommendations from the Guam Election Commission, proffered, at least in this here, this particular legislation. However, I too share the concern that when we're doing this in the eves, in the cusp, just within weeks of a beginning of a new cycle. You know, while it may not drastically change things, it has
All right, thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Sinagustian, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The only problem I have is that you have an original bill, then you come up with a substitute, and then the author comes up with amendments to her own bill, and even her co-sponsor has an amendment. I'd ask that the bill be referred back to committee, clean it up, put it together, send it out one time, so we can just read one bill. Because I'm going back to the original, and falling on with the substitute, and then I'm trying to keep on track now with the amendments. It's from the author. I highly recommend, and I ask my colleagues, to support me that we refer it back to committee so they can be cleaned up one time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the bill back to committee. Is there an objection? There's an objection.
Ma'am, I have a point of inquiry. Are we allowed to amend the bills when they hit the floor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion to refer the bill back to committee. There's been an objection. All in favor of referring the bill back to committee, please raise your hand. Motion passes. All right, the next bill is number 233-37L. Senator Canata, you're recognized.
Hafli, good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 233-37C, sponsored by Senator Roy A. B. Canata, and co-sponsored by Senator Joe S. Sinagustian, which is an act to amend subsection 17116 and appeal to subsection 17118, Chapter 17, Title III, Guam Code, annotated relative to changing preliminary reports to quarterly reports and eliminating final and supplementary reports into the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 233-37 enhances accountability of campaign funds of candidates by requiring candidates to submit quarterly reports rather than current standard preliminary and final reports. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I kindly ask for my colleagues' support on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the bill? On the bill, Senator Brown, are you raising your hand? All right, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I don't have a problem with the bill or reducing reports to the Election Commission because I find it's kind of strange. Before the election, you do a report; right after the election, you do another report. No problem, I'm all for accountability. I'm just a little uncomfortable. It is March of an election year, and as I drive down the road, I see, you know, campaign signs all over the place. God forbid, every other year on Guam, we're going to look at campaign signs all year long until November. I have a problem with that. We're getting too close to the election. We've already picked up our packets, we knew when we ran, or when we were getting our documents, when we're filing what the current requirements are, and I just am uncomfortable that we're a few months away from an election. And while it's just, you know, people will say, "Oh, it's just filing reports, we're reducing the number, what's the big deal?" I just don't like messing around with things related to the election, the year of the election. So that's my reservation. I probably am not going to vote for this bill just simply because of that. You know, if there's another round next year, and we're here, and we're doing it the year before, then I'd be open to deliberating and debating all these issues with regards to elections. But because we ourselves, a number of us, are going to be participating in the election, I don't know unless there's anyone here who's not, we just shouldn't be messing around with it. Traditionally, that was the way it used to be. You don't touch election-related issues during the election year because now we're engaged in the process and we're mending the process, and others can look at it, "Are you guys doing it to benefit yourselves?" So I have that reservation. Not the content of the bill. If it was another day in time, I'd be more than happy to raise my hand and say, "Amen. Let's reduce the, you know, numbers of almost replicated reports," unless anything changed in a couple weeks from the time you filed the last report. But it's just the timing. The timing, I think, at this stage already, you know, we're almost, March is almost over, we're heading into April. In several months, we already have a primary election. So that's my main reservation, Madam Speaker, that I'm relaying with regards to this particular bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill, Vice Speaker Munir Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I listen to the retiring speaker, I want to say, I understand that her perspective is of concern as it relates to an election year. But when these bills were given to the Oversight Chair, if I'm not mistaken, it was given with a bunch of other recommendations from the Guam Election Commission Board of Directors, and I guess we're working closely with the Executive Director. And it just talks about reorganizing the reports from having to do it pre-primary, having to report right after primary, having to report right before general, right after general, and then, so the recommendation was to work on it on a quarterly report. So for me, even if it's an election year, I understand, but in this process, this election, I mean, this legislation was literally at the recommendation of asking this August body to look at making the whole report as it relates to reporting quarters on a quarterly basis. So literally, we'll still have four reports, but to make it organized and consistent, that it would be on a quarterly basis. So on that effort, as I respect the retiring speaker on her perspective, I want to say that with my perspective, looking at it from before the primary, right after the primary, before the general, right after the general, and so forth, I think that making it on a quarterly perspective, that would be every three months. So I support the efforts, and I thank the Guam Election Commission, and of course, the Board of Directors and the Executive Director for working closely with the Oversight Chair, Sana Mossi.
Sana Mossi, Vice Speaker. On the bill, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, when you want to refer to, in this body, when you want to refer to comments made by a certain colleague, you know, a lot of times you refer to them as to where they're staying. Problem is, the last two speakers, they both stay in the same area within a rock's throw from each other. The same street and everything. So I want to talk about, you know, I want to be able to relate to the comments that were put by the General Lady from the lower part of the same area. Okay? Senator Brown. I, you know, Madam Speaker, I have to agree with the good senator in that I understand the value of the bill. It's a good bill. And to take nothing away from the author of the bill, and I recognize what he's doing is he's basically, you know, based on the recommendations from the Guam Election Commission, proffered, you know, at least in this here, this particular legislation. However, I too share the concern that when we're doing this in the eves, in the cusp, just within weeks of a beginning of a new cycle. You know, while it may not drastically change things, it has that impetus, and it has that perception that we're meddling with the election process right before one. And I agree that if this bill were to be proffered immediately after the elections or right at the start of a term, not within days away or weeks away from, you know, an election process, then it comes, for lack of a better term, more palatable. And so my objection to the bill is not for the bill itself, it's in the timing of the bill. That this is something that we should take up not prior, not immediately prior to or during an election cycle. I say this from experience because there was, at one time, over a decade ago, I would say, that this body had dealt with an issue with regards to election process, and it got ugly. It got ugly. And while the intent of it was good, and actually still stands, it was just the idea that it was brought on in the midst, in the eve of, in the midst of an election, it made people wonder as to whether or not the incumbents, if you will, were making it so that it becomes easier for them as opposed to up-and-coming candidates. And while this may not be the, and this is not the case, it's going to be perceived that way. And so, you know, for that reason, I join in the good Senator Brown's concern on the timing of this legislation, not the legislation itself. It's the timing of it. So as much as I would like to vote, because it will make it easier, most definitely, just by principle, I cannot support the bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Minority Leader. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Sinagustian, on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If my colleagues are concerned about the timing, then maybe amend the part there now on the enactment, when it goes into effect, because these, many of the bills that the author has introduced came from the Guam Election Commission, okay? We didn't just draw it up in the back room or anything. Second, because it came from them, not even second, but because it came from them, we bring it before the body. If they're concerned about timing, then amend the enactment part, and then we'll make it happen. Other than that, there's really nothing wrong with this bill. And with that, I stand in support of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Titegri, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to you, and good morning to my colleagues. For everyone, just for information, on May 3, which is only less, about less than two months away, is the last day in which you can file your candidacy for election, for senator, mayors, et cetera, down the line. That's only less than two months away. April, May, yeah, two months away. And then you have to think, when these bills came to this body and when it was filed at the legislature? Everybody knows that if you want to get bills through that are controversial, you do it during an election, which is ridiculous. Nobody's going to, you know, ruffle any feathers, or kick any dust up, or cause any issues, which is shameful. We should speak up. Sometimes when we vote, it might not be so popular, but it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do. Don't worry about your popularity, the people are watching. They can add one plus one. They know exactly what it means. But regardless if it comes from, regardless if it comes from the agency itself, why didn't they give it to us last year, May? Why didn't they give us this whole thing last year, March, where we are today, instead of waiting this late in the ballgame? Now, this is, most of these bills are going to benefit everyone who's going to run, including us. We should all have a conflict of interest in this and recuse ourselves from voting right now, especially because it's an election year. So it makes you wonder, why did they wait this long to submit these bills? Was there a tier of motive to, like, push them through? So like my good colleague from Chalampago said, if this was last year, I have no problem. We can debate this a whole lot longer and decide whether it's good for everybody involved, including the agency. But so far, we're finding that the agency has also submitted legislation to shorten the ability for people to register to vote, shorten the timeline. When it used to be 10 days prior to the election, now they're saying 21 days, we will cancel it. That's not helping the people to register to vote. In fact, it was just mentioned that Pennsylvania right now has decided to keep registration open the day of election. So if somebody forgot, and, "Oh, it's election day, better run down," and didn't register to vote, well, there's the opportunity for that individual to actually go down, register to vote, and vote that same day. We're supposed to encourage the people of Guam to vote, and vote with good conscience, an educated vote, to know who's here, who's showing up for public hearings, who's showing up for session. So this, you know, it just does not sit right with many of us in here. You know, I don't, I'm not sitting here dogging on the author of the legislation. I mean, he was given to him in December, latter part of December, knowing that a public hearing would not happen until maybe January or February. In fact, the public hearing for this, the other latter bills, didn't happen until February, middle part of February of this year. So I really seriously think that we should send this back to committee. Sending other bills back to committee? So I make a motion to send this back to committee. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the bill back to committee. Is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor of referring the bill back to committee, please raise your hand. Motion fails. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill, Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the author's introduction of this bill and the assistance he's providing to the Guam Election Commission. This bill, of course, was given to him by the Guam Election Commission, passed by, supported by a resolution of the commission with both bipartisan support, with our Democrat representatives and our Republican representatives on the Guam Election Commission. A resolution was passed to support this bill. And I understand the concern of the timing of the bill in an election year. However, I know the author will offer an amendment for us to fix that, fix that quite easily, for us not to show any impropriety, for us here in the legislature to benefit ourselves. This is a mechanism for the Guam Election Commission to be able to collect our data, for us to report transparently the money that we're spending in elections, and to make their jobs easier. And so if we're able to do that while still reporting, being accountable to the people, being accountable to the Election Commission and to ourselves, and able to delay the enactment of this legislation, I am in full support of it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the bill.
Mananasi Dos, thank you, Madam Speaker. I think I've been pretty consistent in sharing my concerns about all of these election bills. And I just want to clarify for the record that I believe these bills were submitted by the Guam Election Commission in the middle of last year, and they were subsequently referred by the Committee on Rules expeditiously. So I'm not sure on the delay and why we're, I mean, yeah, I get it, we're concerned about the timeline, but just, you know, not necessarily in defense of the Guam Election Commission, but they didn't just send these bills down here at the last second. But I, of course, I share the concerns that, yeah, we are fiddling with and making significant changes while we're live, like, we are live in this election right now. So, yeah, that's the concern I have. And then I also wanted, if the author would yield to a question about the bill, as we didn't get a lot of information in the open, it was essentially just read the title. So I'm curious about this new section. And I was wondering if the author could shed some light on it. Let me just go ahead and find that. Under C. 3, "The transfer of any remaining surplus or deficit to a new organization expressly designated for a campaign related to a distinct electoral office or issue, which is not the same office or issue currently or previously held by a candidate, party, or committee." If the author would yield and explain how this new language differs from existing statute, Madam Speaker.
Would the author yield to that question?
Madam Speaker, may I ask for a moment's recess so I can just look at the section he was looking at? Thank you.
All right, one minute's recess. All right, one minute's recess. All right, one minute's recess. Senator Conata, I believe where we left off, Senator Barnett had posed a question and you agreed to yield.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you. So the Page 3, Section 3, "The transfer of any remaining surplus or deficit to a new organization expressly designated for a campaign related to distinct electoral office or issue, which is not the same office or issue currently or previously held by a candidate, party, or committee." Example, you're running for Senator and... Or not running for Senator, but you still have revenues or you have funds in your account, and you want to run for Governor or the AG's office or whatnot. All of those revenues are trying to be, what do you call it? Cleaned up and be put into the same area? That way that whether it's negative or positive, it still is with the candidate itself? Does that answer the question?
Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
It doesn't really, Madam, because the question I had asked was how does this new language in this bill differ from existing statute? But I have it in front of me, so I can go ahead and answer. Oh, ma'am, thank you. I still have the floor, right? So the way it is now is if I'm running for Senator and I have money left over in my campaign, I didn't decide I'm not going to seek reelection because, you know, I'm tired of getting bullied by Adalou or whatever. Then what I would do with that surplus is I would have to, according to 3 GCA, any residual contributions to the political party or the person, the candidate, or to the campaign committee of the person of the same party who was a candidate for the same office. Basically, I would have to give it to the party. So as a Democrat, I would have to give my surplus to the Democratic Party. But what this new language does, and I'm not sure if this language even came from the Guam Election Commission, because I'm hearing that it was introduced at the request of candidates. What this new language does is if I'm running for Senator and I have a surplus, and then I decide I want to run for, for example, Congress, this new language will then allow me to take the money I raised as Senator and transfer it over to my congressional campaign, which to me is highly suspect because we're now fiddling with this in a live election year, and it looks like this language will specifically benefit individuals in this House who are in a very similar situation as to what I described. And I'm not sure if that's the kind of election reform that we need to be making during the 11th hour of this election. At least that's how I read it. And I didn't... I think that if the author would yield, does he agree with my assessment of this new language in comparison with the language that's in existing statute, ma'am?
Right, you're asking the Senator to yield? Would the sponsor yield to that question?
It does... He is correct in the sense there is a candidate who is running for office and is seeking another office. The point here, though, in I have an amendment that will clarify the situation that all the reservations of today regarding the current election is going to be covered in 2025. So I made the effective date in my amendment, if we move forward with this legislation, to make the effective date 2025.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Not bother, I don't know. I'm not comfortable moving forward with this, Madam Speaker, and I would ask the body to reconsider the motion that failed earlier? Maybe not. Let's talk about it. Okay, so, yeah, I've obviously shared my concerns. And again, I would just caution the body that whether this goes into effect this year or next year, it's clear that having our hands on this, to me, represents a little bit of a conflict of interest. And I also am just a little disturbed that this new language would... And I don't want to use the word sneak its way into this bill, but I just think it's a little suspect, ma'am. And so I would just like to state that for the record. Situas Masih.
Situas Masih. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Taitikui, on the bill?
Well, actually, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to ask for a motion to reconsider. Making a motion...
Sorry, Senator, you spoke already. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Luhan and then Senator Dwyer.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm just concerned as other speakers that spoke in regards to the election year or a couple of months away. You know, packets have been distributed already. We all have packets that are being distributed with petitions and the requirements that each candidate has to fulfill. I'm just wondering now if the revamping of reporting requirements and everything like that will require, again, addendums to, to the packets that have been received by, by, by the candidates and what we're circulating at this point. And if that's the case, will it be able, would non-fulfillment of some of the requirements that may be added to the reporting requirements knock out certain individuals because they weren't able to fulfill that? And so, you know, I would, I would love to, yes, I, I think we need to holistically look at revamping certain things in regards to, to the election. But a couple of months away from the election and packets already gone out and understanding what requirements need to be had. Likewise, I would love to have the Election Commission here and the Board of Directors to come here to be able to answer some of our questions, so we can, again, know for sure exactly what is going to be required, so we, we ourselves will know. If we were to pass these reform bills for elections, would we ourselves that are running would be able to fulfill the requirements? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. So if it was a year ago that we were tackling this, it would be a good thing, but a couple of months away from the election to be tackling, you know, some major structural changes, infrastructure changes to, to elections, reportings and things of that nature, doesn't sit right with me as well. But anyway, I'm, I'll listen to more arguments and make my decision then, but thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhan. Senator Duña, you're recognized on the bill.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair. You know, I share the concerns of my colleagues, particularly with the issue of the closeness that we are to the election. Madam Chair, I, I know that we have a rule in this body, one subject, one bill requirement. Of course, the exception for that is the budget. But I'm not sure, Madam Speaker, and I, I made, I may have made this in jest when I was talking to the author of these bills earlier, but I really think that particularly since the Guam Election Commission always does their post-election. Sometimes in the federal government, they call it a hot wash. They, they go through the election, they, they go through the things that they think policy changes may be needed or the like. But I really think something like this, Madam Chair, because of the law, the laws of Guam, the law of Guam that, you know, that basically sets the parameters for our election, I think you could do this in a Election Reform Act format and do it to where you sat down and had a couple of roundtables and a public hearing finally on a bill that would amend a series of things that the Election Commission can put before the body and before the people of Guam as to why these changes are necessary. And I think it would be prudent to do that in, in an omnibus manner, you know? Just so that it's clear and it's understood. And obviously, if there's this many discrepancies or, or this many, you know, things that have been found out by the board to say if we change this, if we change this, it's going to make it more efficient, it's going to make it more, you know, there's more accountability built into it, and these are the reasons. I, I, I don't see why we wouldn't, from time to time, make exceptions, maybe even an notwithstanding provision when the bill gets introduced, because it would be multi-subject, but it would be a reform act. There are other bills that we contemplate on the floor sometimes, Madam Speaker, that have multiple subjects, particularly when it comes to districting and some other things that we do in terms of bill formats. I don't think we would be bound by the issue of one bill, one subject matter for a reform act. And, and so for, for that reason, Madam Speaker, I rise to, you know, agree with my colleagues who have concerns with this, and I think we should send this measure back to committee and, and really work with the Election Commission throughout this election and in the end, you know, come up with recommendations and maybe even do it before our term is out or whoever comes to sit in this body once again that has the oversight to introduce, you know, a bill, working with the Commission and all their recommendations and, and do a reform act. I, I just think that that's a logical way to approach it. So at this time, Madam Chair, I, I do join once again in reconsidering the motion to return the bill back to committee.
You're asking for a reconsideration of the motion? Is, is a motion to reconsider?
The actions of the body and the original motion to place the bill back to committee.
Is there an objection to the reconsideration of that motion? There's no objection to reconsideration of the motion, so we will reconsider the motion. All in favor of moving the bill back to committee, please raise your hand. On the, this is on, on the motion, we are now reconsidering the motion to send the bill back to committee. So all in, there's an objection. So all in favor of sending the bill back to committee, raise your hand. Oh. All right, so there's no objection now, but there was an objection back then. And so we're going to do show of hands.
Madam Speaker?
All right, colleagues. All right, there was no objection to the motion to reconsider the vote. We are reconsidering the vote, so all in favor of sending the bill back to committee, please raise your hand. In favor of sending the bill back to committee? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Senator, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I moved to recess until 2:00 PM today.
We have just one more resolution on our, well, on that motion, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor of recessing until 2:00, please raise your hand.
Madam Speaker, I withdraw the motion.
Motion's withdrawn. We're now continuing in second reading. We are now on Resolution Number 311-37COR. Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, good morning. Madam Speaker, I moved to place onto the third reading with an opportunity to speak on Resolution 311-37COR as introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senators Christopher M. Duña, Senator Jesse Luhan, Senator Roy B. Canata, Senator Dwayne T. DeSonicus, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Joe Sinagastin. Madam Speaker, it's relative to supporting the participation of Republic of China, Taiwan, as an observer at the World Health Organization's 77th World Health Assembly and to reaffirm support for the participation of the Republic of China, Taiwan, as an observer in the international organizations. And I'd like to speak on it, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Sidoos Masi, talu, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity to speak and rise in support of Resolution Number 311-37COR. I want to thank my good sponsors, Madam Speaker, for being a part of the cosponsorship of this. Madam Speaker, I want to let you know that Resolution Number 311 is very similar to the resolutions we have introduced and subsequently passed in the past few legislatures, if not more than that. And I want to say, colleagues, as Chamorro and Gomenians, we know just how important the cultural values of interdependence and reciprocity are. And so for me, when the opportunity arises for our island to advocate for the island nation of Taiwan, I always said yes. Hungan. When we ask for assistance, Madam Speaker, Taiwan delivers, whether through opening a medical charter flights between Guam and Taiwan, assistance during the pandemic, telemedicine, or even veterinary pet health services to help get dogs spayed and neutered, even to working closely and having a partnership with the University of Guam. They have found ways to assist our island very meaningfully. I want to say to you, Madam Speaker, that the health infrastructure Taiwan offers is above par with many, many health facilities in this region. Our residents are able to access their incredible doctors, their hospitals, clinics through their health insurance providers. We are glad to have Taiwan, Republic of China, Taiwan, as a true partner in our community. And Madam Speaker, Taiwan, I must say that Taiwan is a global leader in medicine, technology, aviation, and there's no reason their medical field or any of their industries should go unrepresented or left in the dark when new regulations or industry standards are discussed. They often rely on friendly members to relay the information discussed at these meetings. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that the 24 million people of Taiwan deserve, they truly deserve meaningful representation and participation at intergovernmental exchanges and conferences, especially pertaining to health, safety, and technology advancements. And with that being said, I hope to reiterate, Madam Speaker, Guam's support of the Republic of China, Taiwan, in seeking observer status at the World Health Assembly and under, and other industry-related conferences. I would also like to extend a very big thank you to the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office Director General Liu, who's now here with us. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention former Director General Paul Chen for their work the past couple of years. As you know, at one point in time, Madam Speaker, the office was closed. And, and with the efforts of Guam, because we are the sister city and working closely with American Institute and other partners within Uncle Sam, we were able to get this Taipei Economic and Cultural Office reopened with the representation of Taiwan and, and, and their programs and facilities. So I just want to say thank you for all the partnerships. And we do have a large community of folks from the Republic of China, Taiwan, who've made Guam their home for over five decades. So I hope that my colleagues who are sitting in this august body today help support those efforts. And as you know, Madam Speaker, like I said in my opening statement, that a lot of the previous legislatures, especially the ones that I've been at, which was, I think, nine, that we've supported this, this kind of similar resolution. So I ask that my colleagues, please help me support the same. So undankulun, sidoos masi, for this opportunity to speak and rise in support of Resolution 311-37. And I will also note for the record, Madam Speaker, that, that our sister-city relationship has been existence for 50-plus years. So I want to thank the Republic of China, Taiwan, for, for literally staying like a brother and sister to our islands. And we've seen a lot of successes that have happened with the partnership and knowing that, especially as it relates to the medical industry, where, where all our insurance companies here support the efforts of those who need specialty care in the Republic of China, Taiwan. So undankulun, sidoos masi, talu, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I hope my colleagues support the efforts again. Sina masi.
Sina masi. On the resolution, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Duña, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Resolution 311-37. I want to commend the author for her continued advocacy, our vice speaker, in this area. You know, Madam Speaker, all the councils have their different methods of interacting with our community. I have to say that Republic of China, Taiwan, has been just one of the most active that I've seen in terms of doing everything that it can to help our community. It is almost unfathomable to think that they continue to not have a seat at the table when it comes to the WHO and observer status. We only have to look to COVID-19 to really see that their membership and their ability to interact, I'm certain, would have had a great impact just by looking at how they handled and managed COVID-19 as opposed to other jurisdictions within the region. They had extreme success when it came to maintaining and keeping the virus down. They also had kept a lot of their economic drivers moving. They were very innovative in a lot of different ways. And I just want to say that they're, they're an amazing country and a people. And it just seems to me that we need to continue to advocate for this, and hopefully someday they will realize having a seat at the table due to their immense amount of research, their technology, particularly as the retiring speaker said, in the medical field and science and technology. And it just makes sense. So once again, I'm glad we're doing this in this august body to continue to speak on this issue and say, you know, hopefully Taiwan will be recognized and have a seat at the table in the WHO. So thank you, Madam Chair, and once again, thanks to the sponsor for allowing me to be a cosponsor and advocating on this behalf. I know the Council General's office is, is very appreciative of all the efforts that we put forward, in particular this one. Sidoos masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos masi, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the resolution? Senator Luhan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in full support of Resolution 311-37, as was mentioned by previous speakers as well. And, and thank you very much to the author for allowing us to, to co-author the, the resolution. As was mentioned as well, the, the partnership that we have fostered forward with, with Republic of China, Taiwan, has been enormous and great. Just, you know, a few months back, three of us, and I'm sure in, in the years past as well, other legislators and, and sure, again, in upcoming months, there'll be legislators as well that will be visiting Taiwan as well. And, you know, we saw, of course, their medical facilities and working with them closely to be able to have some medical agreements between ourselves and, and their facilities. And we have been working very hard to try to get direct flights from Taiwan to Guam, so we would be able to have another country that our people can, can have access to medical, great medical facilities as well. And, you know, one of the facilities, medical facilities that we had visited while we were there, and should we be able to have a direct flight to Taiwan? They said in an emergency situation, if a, if a patient was, was air-vac the emergency, from that particular airport to that hospital we visited would be less than a couple of minutes to get that, the, that patient from the tarmac to the emergency facility at, at. emergency facility at the hospital. And so that being said, not only that, but looking at, of course, airlines that can fly nonstop between Guam and Taiwan and Guam. Right now, it takes about, you know, a whole day to be able to travel. Either you travel from here to the Philippines and then to Taiwan, or from here to Korea and then to Taiwan. And so with the layover, it amounts to almost a full day. But that being said, we spoke to a couple airlines, Starlux and Tiger Air, and I know that Starlux will be doing a charter flight, I think, starting next month. And that being said, Tiger Air is very interested in coming here as well. So again, this resolution is very, very important. And hopefully, one day soon, that they will be sitting as observers in the World Health Organization. It's very important, you know, they're a democracy like we are. And so that being said, and was previously mentioned in regards to their handling of COVID, they did a tremendous job in their handling of COVID over there. As a matter of fact, when our visit over there, they said it was really like nothing really happened. Nothing really happened. And so their handling of that, the whole COVID-19 situation is to be looked at and to be as something that we can learn upon. They're a big manufacturer, of course, of computer parts and all that. And hopefully that we can, down the line here, partner up and have some sort of agreement in regards to computer parts as well here in Guam. And that being said, again, I want to thank the co-author and the senators that, again, were with us a few months back. And also the Chinese Taipei Office out here for organizing that trip and to allow us to see their government and actually private entities that are doing business here on Guam from Taiwan. So again, ask my colleagues to please support Resolution 311-37. It's, again, it's time that a democratic Taiwan, Republic of China, Taiwan, be included in, again, as a observer in the international organizations. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the resolution? Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this resolution. For some of my colleagues that have, were in office when my father was a senator, my father served 20 years in this Guam legislature. Every year, he supported Taiwan. And the famous statement that one of my colleagues have told me that my father would say is, "To determine if you're tried and true, Taiwan has been tried and they're true." Them being an observer in the World Health Organization should have been done many years ago. This is an opportune time for us to promote that, then so be it. But exactly what my colleague said, they're leading the computer world, they're leading the health world, you know, on the health industry. If there's a way for us to get them to be here and help us, maybe many of our issues would be resolved. And they do have that ability, they do have the capital to do that. But with this one, with the World Health Organization, I'm in full support of that. And I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the resolution? Senator Burnett, you're recognized.
We'll recess. It's working now. Do you want to try yours, Senator, or would you like to recess? We'll recess until 2:00 P.M. All right, well, if I, okay, let me just consult with audio. Just give me one minute. One.
We're back on the audio now. Previously, for those who are watching, we had called for a recess until 2:00 P.M. today, but the audio went out right at, while we were announcing that. So I'm re-announcing that right now. Recess until 2:00 P.M.